Good evening, everyone. Welcome to.
It's official.
Okay. For anyone who was wondering. Uh, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August twentieth meeting of the zoning board of review for the town of Warren. I am vice chair Jason Reynone. To my right is Jason Nystrom. Following down the line is Bert Rodriguez, Michael Alves, David Francis, and Chuck Thibodeau. Uh, let's take care of a few administrative things before we start this evening. First order of business is the approval of the minutes from our July sixteenth regular meeting and our July twenty-third special meeting. Is there any question or amendments to the minutes circulated?
A move approval, uh, approval of the minutes.
I'll second it.
We have a motion made in second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Both sets of minutes are approved. From an administrative matters standpoint, as I mentioned at the last meeting, unfortunately, our chair has had to resign due to family medical issues. Uh, so one of the things that we do need to do is officially vote on a new chair, vice chair, and our secretary for this board, uh, has actually been promoted within the town, so we need to vote on a new secretary. Uh, let's begin for the appointment of a chairman of the committee.
I was just gonna make the motion to take administrative matters and make it, uh, the last agenda item so that.
Unfortunately.
Yeah.
I just found that have a chair, like starting the vice chair.
For the meeting.
Yeah, so unfortunately.
Just figured I'd throw it out there.
Yeah, we do need to burn through it, but we should be able to do it quickly. Uh, is there a nomination for chairman of the zoning board of review?
I'll make a nomination to make Jason Reynone chip.
I'll second it.
There is a motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, is there an appointment or a nomination for vice chair?
I nominate Chuck Thibodeau.
I second that nomination.
Is there any discussion? Chuck, are you willing to accept that nomination?
Yes, I will.
Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Take care of that. Uh, and Maya has been, uh, promoted or changed apartment. She is now officially the town's tax assessor. Uh, so Haley Santos is going to be this board's, uh, official secretary.
Uh, make a motion to approve Haley to be secretary.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Uh, aye.
Any opposed? So moved. That takes care of that. Thank you all for coming this evening. Uh, the general way that this will work is I will announce the next matter before the board. Uh, I will read it as it is listed in the official agenda for the evening. At that point, we will ask whoever that application pertains to, uh, to please come up, state your name and current address for the record, and tell us a little bit about, uh, what it is that you are looking to do. Uh, once we have a solid handle on exactly what you are asking of this board, we will ask you to have a quick seat. We will open up a public portion where anyone who has, uh, concerns from the public, maybe in a butter, wants to come up and discuss the matter, can come forward and say their piece. Once we have heard from all interested parties, we will close the public portion of the proceedings and we will ask the applicant to come back up for any final words. Uh, we will begin with application ZB twenty-five nineteen. Club Recreativo Cultural P O, owner and Sandra Maderos applicant. One thirty-two Child Street, Plat Map nine, lot thirty-one. Request for a special use permit to allow outdoor dining in the business zoning district. Is there anyone here for that application, please?
I have a question on this matter.
Yes.
Do we have any plans or anything showing where?
Not at press side, so that will be something we will have to discuss.
So within the package itself, it looks like we've moved to a different form just for organizational purposes. Um, can you guys explain the packet? Uh, because I don't see a traditional form and all that good stuff, so it'll help us navigate through.
So, um, I'll look to see what we have. I believe that they did bring a plan. Um, this, so this new, if we're all aware that the state has, um. Okay, so the state basically implemented the digital, um, application for the zoning. So that's what you're seeing now. That's why we don't have a handwritten application anymore. They want it uniformly throughout the state, so every city in town will be going to this. We were one of the fortunate, uh, communities to go first, maybe unfortunate, I don't know. Um, but that's the, so that's why you probably don't have that in your packet. I'll look to see if we have it, but I believe we did have, um, something, but that's why it looks so different for you guys.
Any other questions before we go?
Uh, yeah. It doesn't appear to have the same, like, I guess we can go over this later on after these applications, but it doesn't have the same format and data. So the information in this is readily available for us to just look at, at, you know, at a glance. So when you start looking at like, you know, rear side, front yard setbacks, all that good stuff, we don't have that table. So that might be a little bit, take us a little longer, we might need a little bit more information, uh, presented in the packets if it's not part of the form. Just, we can talk about it a little later.
Yep. Please, your name and address for the record?
The address here, my first name?
Yes.
Thirty-one, catch a quarter.
Okay, please, tell us what you'd like to do.
Uh, we just wanted to do, um, a little outdoor dining with this alcoholic beverage places, uh, only when the kitchen is open, which is not every day.
No, towards the front.
There we go. Sorry, one more time.
So what we're looking to do is do a little outdoor dining with alcoholic beverages, but just when the kitchen is open, mainly on a Friday night.
Okay. What, when is, does, does the kitchen have regular hours?
Uh, the kitchen is open for lunch every day, but Friday night is when we're looking to do the outdoor dining.
Okay.
Cause they're open, cause it, we're open at night.
All right, so just so we're clear, uh, as you're before us today, you are only looking to have the outdoor dining available Friday night.
Right.
Okay. What hours is the kitchen open Friday night?
Uh, from five to nine.
You said you're looking for alcohol, uh, service as well?
Yes.
That's not off.
No, that would be a town council.
It doesn't matter.
Okay. So I think the one thing that I noticed in the packet, and Matt, maybe you could speak to this, there is no site plan included with this. Is that correct?
Uh, I looked through the packet, there isn't, but I believe, I thought you guys dropped one off.
We dropped something off, but it was pretty basic. It wasn't like an actual where it's gonna be.
Okay. I don't have it here in the packet.
Yeah, no, it's not, and I checked it in this, it's not.
Yeah, the only document it looks like that's uploaded is the, uh, the butters list.
Yeah, and there's the, the written description of what you're looking to do that is included in the packet. And I thought that write-up made sense where I think our analysis of the application is falling short is things like you described that it's going into the existing parking lot, but you've said that it will not take up any parking space.
Right, cause it's in the back more, it, we have two lots. So we have on each side of the building and towards the back a little bit more, there aren't parking spots.
So that would be the east side of the building, um, and then the rear.
Right.
Part, I see that it sticks north, northerly, uh, that side.
Mm-hmm.
So in that space, that northern extra spot, you're looking to put.
Mm-hmm. Just a few tables, nothing, nothing too big.
Do you know what the square footage is of that area?
I don't.
Looks like there's eight parking spaces in that area.
To the right, it would be more to the left.
Oh, okay, so you're not even, you're talking a subsection of that.
Yes.
I have it pulled up on Google Maps, that's all I'm looking at now.
Yeah, go figure the day I forget my phone.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so as you're, so, so it's, just so we can kind of understand the layout a little bit, because we don't have a picture that's part of the record. You're staring at the club in front of you, Tom's market is behind you.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so where you want to put these tables, it's gonna be on the.
How about we have her come up and look at the Google and show it to us so that we can know exactly where it's gonna go?
I think the only thing that concerns me is there's no way to enter that into the record, which means there's no way to actually have a paper.
That's why.
Yeah. You're gonna need to put dimensions on the area and everything, because remember when Clan Chat came back, there was a problem.
Yeah.
Yeah. As the chair, if I may, seems like, um, this application needs to be more detailed. There's already some assumptions and let's look at some, you know, some points that we need an official record, we need official plans.
Mm-hmm.
I think it would, um, warrant a continuance, give the applicant, let's let the applicant know exactly what we need. Um, the applicant can go and provide that to the building official and come back next month and everybody be well for us and actually what they have a question.
Should we see if there's a public comment, just?
You can, can just continue the public hearing.
I didn't know if you want to get.
If you want to.
Same with any issue for the.
You can if you want to, that's your prerogative, but we will continue the public hearing next month also, so it's your prerogative.
Okay. I think out of, in the interest of making sure that nobody came out for the evening and doesn't at least get the chance to mention something if they can't make it next month. Um, do you understand sort of what we've been talking about?
I did.
Okay. Um, if you wouldn't mind, if I can ask you to have a quick seat, we're gonna open sort of part one of the public portion of this application. If there is anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this matter, please make yourself known. Great, then I don't think we're putting anybody out. If, we will close the public portion, if you wouldn't mind coming back up. So I think where the board and our town solicitor have sort of come down is what we need is a plan of some kind that indicates relative to where the building is located, relative to the property lines, an indication of where this seating area is going to be.
Okay.
With dimensions for what kind of square footage we're talking about. What we don't want to have happen is, say, six months down the road or sometime next year, a neighbor complains and says the seating area has grown to something that's, we can't.
Need more.
Right, and we need to know what those originally approved limits were.
Okay.
Um, so the way that this would work is we would ask that you request a continuance from us so that we can move this, uh, forward to next month's meeting, which would give you that ensuing month to generate that paperwork and be able to get it back to the building official, who will make sure that we see it before the September meeting.
Okay, so I'll just request a continuance.
Very good, I'll make a motion.
So there has been a request for continuance and there is a motion to approve that continuance, a second to the September meeting, yes?
Correct.
Very good. There is a motion made and seconded to continue ZB twenty-five dash nineteen to our September zoning meeting. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
As the check, we put on the record of exactly what day in September.
Uh, yes, we can. According to my list, it's September seventeenth. Should be the third Wednesday.
Oh, should we have? Can I ask a quick question?
Please.
Actually, I mean.
Is Mike serving?
So, I'm sorry?
I'm adding an alternate, so somebody else probably has to do that, right?
Oh, that's an interesting question. Can an alternate make such a motion?
Negative.
Okay, so let's. So clarification wise.
Yeah.
Bert?
I make a motion to move the, uh, here, seventeen of September.
I'll second that.
Great, so motion made and seconded with people who are allowed to do so, uh, to move to the seventeenth of September. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. September seventeenth, we'll see you then.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Firming in my own calendar, yes, seventeenth is the third Wednesday. Great. Moving on, application ZB twenty-five dash twenty, the return on main owner, uh, Vahra Hodges applicant, one thirty-six Main Street, Plat Map one, lot seventeen. Request for a variance to allow a fence in the rear yard greater than six feet in height in the R six zoning district. Is there anyone representing this application present? Please. Hmm. Your name and, uh, name and address for the record.
Bianca Bernash and my home address is one Mill Street, Thibodeaux, Rhode Island.
Very good. And your relation to the application?
I'm the host of the property. They're not physically able to be here because they're in California.
Gotcha. Okay, so please tell us what is planned to be done.
Um, currently the fence is at six feet. They're looking to raise it up to eight feet. Um, just a section of the driveway. Um, they do intend to include a spa in that area, so just a little bit of privacy for the guests.
Okay. Gentlemen, questions?
Uh, you, you did, Kate, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name, I was writing something down.
Bianca Bernash.
Yeah, thank you, uh, thank you. Um, so currently you said the fence is six feet tall, correct?
Correct.
What is in that back rear area currently? Is this, um, spa setup currently existing or is this all to be proposed?
To all be proposed. Um, currently there's just like a grill and patio set.
Okay, and what's there currently, including the current six-foot fence, is what's shown in the photographs in the packet, correct?
Yes, sir.
And in that picture, you have, uh, two different heights. Uh, is the six-foot the larger height and the shorter foot fence, um, is, is that four feet?
I would say about, yes.
And.
And they, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, you're looking to get the whole fence, um, on that side, six feet?
Just the area that's already raised. Um, they just want to put it up two more feet and then, um, close it in where the, I don't know, that diagram shows planters. Um, but along the planters and it's eighty, eighty accessible, um, and then you get to the side of the building as well.
So just an L, if you will?
Yes, yep.
Eight feet?
Yes.
None of the stuff they've proposed, they'll get to setbacks?
It's existing?
Well, no, like these.
They're not permanent?
But it looks like there's like plumbed, like showerheads, that's, doesn't count as a structure?
Okay, even what I'm assuming is the hardwood sauna does not qualify as a structure. Ah, okay.
This is a multifamily house or is this a bed and breakfast or what is it?
Um, it's Airbnb.
It's an Airbnb.
So this is essentially a proposed rec area for the Airbnb?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you know, is the eight-foot fence elevation that you're requesting eight feet above the six to eight inch raised wooden deck or is it eight feet above grade?
I'm not sure if I understand your question. I'm sorry, that's not really my realm.
So is it an eight-foot fence above the ground?
Above the ground.
Eight-foot fence above this eight-inch tall deck that's being proposed?
Above the ground.
Okay.
You described the, uh, the budding properties, uh, to us. Are they residential? Are they commercial? Are they mixed?
They're residential on the backside, um, which is along the planters. Um, that is a multifamily and then on the right side again, another residential multifamily. Um, no, it's actually, sorry. Left side, rather.
From the looks of the photographs, one of the sides of the fence you're requesting looks like it would be up against a shed. The other looks like it's in very close proximity to the next house over. Is that correct?
Um, when you say shed, are you referring to the sauna?
Uh, no, I'm referring to the, the small wooden building that seems to be just past the fence on the, get my orientation. On the east side of the building.
Yes, it is, it is that close.
And at least the renderings that are provided show a privacy fence going all the way around this spa area. Is that to be the case?
Yes.
So instead of this open courtyard area, it's just gonna be kind of cubed off?
Yes, so it's not gonna, um, extend into like the full driveway, so just where it's gonna replace where the planters are, that's kind of separating the driveway from the recreational area currently.
The fence that is proposed in these rendered drawings, um, is there gonna, is it gonna be, uh, I don't want to say light permeable, but is it gonna be solid or is it gonna be kind of slatted where there could be light that kind of passes through the slats?
No passing of lights based off of the material that I see that they're using, no. I would say no for now.
Ask a question, are we just reviewing the height of the fence? Right, relative to our jurisdiction?
Ultimately, yes. The variance that is being requested is to put an eight-foot fence where the zoning code says they can only have a six-foot fence.
Yeah, okay, yeah, and by my, uh, just my, for clarification, my only point about light passing through, agree, I agree, we're not here to question the materials, but, um, you're raising it up high. I'm, my, one of my concerns is you're gonna be blocking sunlight from that apartment building next door by having a solid surface.
So, having lived in that area from that north end, I think you want to have the two feet of fence rather than the, whatever light that emits, just because of the density and the amount of people that, you know, tend to.
Yeah, there is a strong density there where you're looking at the person's backyard. I, I own, uh, one twenty, which was right on a corner of Thompson and Main, and we were looking right into the backyard of the other, and we ended up putting the chowry and stuff like that to, for, for blockage. I mean, it's very dense and tight in there.
So I think.
Privacy, I could see where they want it.
Yeah, I mean, I could certainly understand the desire for privacy in the spa area. I think my concern goes a little bit along with what Jason's concern is. You raise that fence by two feet and you're essentially blocking those windows with a solid surface that's less than eighteen inches away.
I don't know that we're doing that. That could be an assumption. We'd have to actually look at the space and look at the environment to really make a, a decorative statement like that. I, I don't feel comfortable saying that whatever amount of sunlight's being blocked is going to have an increase or decrease.
So to be perfectly honest, I'm not even talking about sunlight.
Yeah.
I'm talking about the fact that the six-foot fence comes to the bottom of the window. If you raise it by two feet, you are blocking those windows.
Which is pretty much what they want to do by putting two more feet is to get more privacy, block the windows.
Yeah, one of my worries too is, uh, air and AC units hanging out. Um, I'm just, I, I understand the request for privacy for this commercial enterprise, I get that. My concern is for the residents next door. It is, and I get it, it is.
I guess we could open up the public comment.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, those are my concerns.
We might want to see what Paul Cass has seen before making those assumptions, yeah.
Yeah.
Here.
It just.
Yep, so we will open this up for public comments. If there is anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this matter, please come forward. All right. Well, seeing no one, we will close the public portion and please, if you would come back up.
Um, a question I have, the fence that is currently existing. Do you know who put that fence up? Is it the current owner or was that there when the current owners bought the property?
From what I took from it, that they had came to another zoning meeting for that fence as well. Um, so I believe that that was added when they took over the property or purchased the property.
Do you recall when that was?
Um, I want to say it was twenty twenty-two.
So I don't believe that they came before us because that fence is at the, uh, legal height. So they, they would, there wouldn't be a need for them to come before us. They may have, I think they came before, they may have come before. Um, this is a unique property. This is one of the grandfathered properties for short-term rental. So this is a unit that is, all four units inside are all short-term rental. Our new, or short-term rental ordinance only allows a fifty percent rule, which is fifty percent of what you have can be short-term. The other fifty percent has to be long-term, so that, they may have come before for that. Um, I will say in your motion, just make sure that it's stated that this does not affect the parking because this unit has off-street parking for the, uh, for, uh, short-term rentals and they need that. So as long as this does not affect what they have for parking now.
Is, was the question around who owns the fence? Is that what originated the question? Didn't, didn't you ask, um, did they put the fence up? Who put the fence?
Yes.
Yeah, so who, who owns the fence essentially? Like who, who authorized the fence to go up?
Yeah, I was just curious, who put it up as, as it stands today?
Not, not when it was put up or whether it came before us, right?
No, no, my, no, my, my question was, do we know who built the fence?
Yes.
Yeah, and, uh, it was, it was the current owner, like, was, did the current owners put it in or was it there when they bought it?
Absolutely, and I think that's what we're asking. And did you, did you state that they put it up?
Um, I can't tell you exactly the year that it happened, um, which I believe is twenty twenty-two however, but, um, that fence went up when they took over and made it into Airbnb.
They put.
Correct.
Yes. So I just wanted to make sure that question was answered, because I think we're going off into another area around when, when was it built? Did it come before us, all that kind of stuff? So I just wanted to clean that up.
They could have done greenery on top of it still, what's existing.
Well, that's an interesting point.
And they don't need a permit.
Absolutely.
Yeah, true.
And we're not opening a can of worms in that neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean.
Or they could put a ten-foot fence.
Yeah.
And ask it healthy, you know?
They're asking for eight.
I'm just saying, you could put eight, ten feet of property.
I think the only, if I must interject, um, the only concern would be like the loop around part that's not existing is to add that, um, for the more privacy, because you can, you know, obviously, you want to be isolated from the neighbors, but as well as what's, people looking in as well from across the. You wanna be isolated from the neighbors, but as well as what's the people looking in as well from across the street. So it's gonna wrap around.
Interestingly enough, I don't believe that there's anything in the code about literally putting a fence in the middle of your own backyard, correct? It only comes into play when it's on the property line?
No, actually it doesn't state where in the yard. It just states side, rear or front. So even if you put. A, a fence. Say four by four fence in the back technically in the middle of your yard, that would fall.
It's still limited to six feet like a, or a pipe statue. Okay. So then, yes, we would be talking about. The variant. I, I'm assuming that the request, at least based on the renderings that we're seeing. Is that that eight foot fence would be the full square around the spa area, correct?
Yes.
Yes, that whole area that's gonna be the uh, yellow box, right?
Correct.
Okay.
We were looking at the side through the hall, it's like go with the windows you guys talked about before, basically would be that whole dog. But where the fence is raised. Looks like where the fence is raised up now. At the back.
So um, when I asked you if it was gonna be the L, it's actually a U?
I'm sorry, I mean, miss, as you, as they were saying that question, I feel like I misinterpreted it. The L is currently in place.
Yes.
A U will be, uh, be what's happening, yes.
Yeah.
Question I've got for you.
Yeah.
As it stands today, um, does the fence go down the entire length of the property all the way down to Main Street?
Um, yes, but the height changes.
Okay, so the, uh, where does it change? Do you know?
So once you get back to that, um. Like in the rendering with, where the spa is currently, um, once you get past that, it's a chain link fence.
Okay, what's the height of the chain link?
Um, like a standard, like probably up to here. So I don't know what that would be. Four feet.
Okay, but that's your estimate, okay. Um. This proposed eight foot fence, is that, is any of that going to carry down and either replace or run alongside that existing chain link fence?
No.
So it is. It is your testimony today that this is the eight, the proposed eight foot fence is only for this. Yellow square area that's been provided in the plans.
Correct, yes.
And what's the square footage of that square area? Do we know?
Um, I can, I can pull it up with my phone. I think I have the same thing. It should be on there as well.
Is that right? Is that three twenty-four? Still on my phone, I don't have a guess. I can't do that in your head? You do not want me to do math on my own.
Yes, three twenty-four is eighteen by eighteen, so that is just a square.
I mean, Mr. Chair, I can, if you, if, if you're interested, I mean, I'll be honest, my, I understand the request. My concern is the close proximity to the abutting residence. Um, if this is kind of off in the middle of nowhere. I think it would be a different calculation on my part, but. I'm having some issues with this part and I'm wonder, and I just wanna put it to the board. This might be something that might be able to be rectified by a site visit to see. The pictures we've got right now. They're better than nothing, but it's hard to kind of see exactly how close. Everything is.
Yeah, I'd have to agree with you on that. I'm not comfortable, but a site visit might make me more comfortable.
Yeah, I mean, as it stands today, I would be inclined not to, but I think see, getting eyes on the ground, having, y- you know. You may be marked out or having a pole kind of going up to eight feet, so showing us, you know, how this would look may, um. It would be helpful, I would think.
Okay.
Is that something you or the owners would be amenable to?
Um, I think they'd be more than happy to do that, yes.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree. I think. Being in that location, seeing what an eight foot fence would actually do, seeing how close the surrounding properties are. Would probably be a good idea cuz I think I'm, I'm in a similar boat to. Uh, Jason and Chuck. That, you know, I, based on the photos, it strikes me as concerning. Um, and I do think. I honestly don't remember who it was that mentioned it. I think there may be. Non-fence options. That could get you that privacy, whether it's lattice or green work or something. You know, augmenting either the existing fence or the fence that's proposed in the renderings. So that that top two feet is privacy creating, but not necessarily fence.
Okay, and are there, just so I know, to report back, are there any regulations or any zoning violations with just installing those things that you just suggested?
I would leave that to the building official, but I don't know the answer.
Um, if you put in shrubbery, there's no, we deal with this, I don't, one particular property. There's no uh, height. You can let it grow as high as you want, as long as it stays within the property line.
Okay.
Is there any, like the addition of twenty-four inches of lattice to the top of. An existing fence or a six foot fence? Is that a building code issue or is that something they would be able to do?
The fence isn't considered. What material? It's considered the height. So if you go, if you do a six foot fence with two foot lattice, that's an eight foot.
It's still an, oh, it's still an eight foot fence. Okay, gotcha. So then. I mean, I'll read it, it would be one option.
I'll be honest with you, I know this, I know this area well. I mean, I've run through those, the neighborhood my whole childhood. And if you look at it, I mean, one side, it's going, it's gonna be giving blockage to a yard. If you look at it, this is the whole yard on this side. The only bone of contention with near a building is right here and you're talking a very small. Um, and I'll be honest with you, we had that, we had that, and it's not really gonna be affecting any of the. Any of the livable area. It's gonna, it's a very small, um. Like kind of little alleyway.
On, on the north side, there's already upper bodies.
Yeah. In my, in my, my, you know, where, where my house used to be, it used to be the same thing. And I would have rather have a nice long fence, a high fence rather than, cuz I mean, these, these multifamilies do go up. And if we, and I did drive over there and I know that an eight foot fence is really not gonna affect the windows. That's up, that's up to you. I mean, I just, it's such a small section area. Because the house covers the rest of the house. If you look, the house is covering all, the house is cut, is impeding the windows more than that little fence is gonna do.
And on the right hand side with the smaller area fence, um, it's full of trees.
Well, yeah, it's all upper bodies, but that's, that's just clear yards. They'd probably be happy that you're going a baby.
Well, you can't see the yard cuz of the upper bodies, so.
Right.
What they're saying is a, a justifiable alternate.
Right.
Is actually on the neighbor's yard.
Right.
So, uh, you know, maybe wanna reconsider. Maybe that's why you're not asking for that section to be increased cuz it's four feet.
Right, so.
Upper bodies behind it.
Yes.
And the upper bodies look like they're probably about. Probably over eight, eight, probably, but yeah, twelve feet. I wouldn't go eight, you know, yeah.
And they also wanna keep that side for parking as well. So that's why they're not too interested in extending it that far along.
I think a site visit sounds smart. Just take a quick, quick peek at it. Really, it's the, it's the fence in the middle of the yard thing.
Sure.
That stands out.
Well, I think what I'm hearing is the, a plurality of board members would be interested in doing a site visit to actually stand in this space and. See what it feels like, see what eight feet's gonna do. Would that be amenable to you?
Yes.
Um, then I guess the question is. When do we do that? Could we do that?
Could do it the uh. I was forgetting, need how much time then, like a half hour?
I'm wondering if we could do it in the half hour before the September meeting.
If you could, if I may, um. We've done before meetings, just make sure that we give us enough time to go to the site visit, see what we need to see. Make any decisions at the site, you know, and questions that we have to a, answer and get back here.
Has to be at least an hour.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if, yeah, maybe do six o'clock on uh, was it?
Six o'clock on the seventeenth? Shall we all check the calendars?
Just gonna, I'll make it work.
Chuck, does that work for you?
Yeah.
No, the only thing I have on the seventeenth is only board meeting.
Excellent, I love that.
Um, what I would ask, um, it would, for me, and I'm sure some of the others, is if you could have something that's eight, if, if it's like a stick or a pole. Something that's eight feet that you can stand up so that we can, you can kind of hold up, you can show us, you know, as a direct comparison. What's existing to what's, what's gonna be proposed.
Okay.
Right.
Often times, uh, input from the neighbor directly involved could be helpful.
Okay.
Just consider that.
Great. Um, so. This is not, it's a continuance, but it's not an applicant requested continuance, correct? Um, so is there a motion to continue this to a site meeting to be, uh, site visit to be held September seventeenth at six PM?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Yeah, they'll be coming to the meeting, right?
Say that again.
Have a second motion, it's application. Application be continued.
Oh, actually, I move that uh, application ZB twenty-five twenty, um, be moved to the uh. September seventeenth meeting.
Second half.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Can I ask two questions?
Yes.
Um, this is my first time. So I meet you guys at six PM and then come here afterwards.
Correct.
Okay, and then do I have to stay for the rest of these for, I don't know if I missed, if I have to stay throughout the whole meeting?
Uh, no, so.
If you want to, and why?
So I still appreciate it.
You don't have to get back here until seven.
Okay.
So that ends at like six thirty.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Um, the Portuguese club will be up for you because they'll also be considered old business, but anything that's continued from this meeting would go before anything new. That's next pocket.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Stay on the seventeenth.
Uh, Mr. Chair, this uh, next applicant coming for us, I have to recuse myself.
Very good. Uh, if you can check with the clerk, there is paperwork to be done.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, but for all of you home gamers, that means that uh, Michael Als will be a voting member on this. Moving on to application ZB twenty-five dash twenty-two, Noana Realty LLC owner and Barry Carina applicant through uh, two ninety-three Child Street. Flat map twelve lot one sixteen, request for a special use permit to allow a small automotive repair in the manufacturing zoning district. How are you, sir?
Good.
Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Barry Carina, twenty-nine Casey Drive in Bristol.
Excellent, what would you like to do?
Uh, so I'm going to be doing or would like to do uh, some outdoor power equipment, repair and maintenance in that space. I believe there's a. A zoning issue, I believe it's zone manufacturing, so I'm just looking for a special use.
Makes sense. Now, um. Matt, this is the old box building?
Yes, this is the old Taylor Box building. It was purchased by Chafee Roofing. So Chafee Roofing is in part, is in part of the building. This is a, a separate part that they're going to, um. If, if the special use permit is approved tonight, then the applicant will have his business. Um, this is a business that is currently running in Bristol and he's looking to bring it to Warren, um, and expand it, so.
Excellent. Uh, let's see, couple of quick questions. How many employees do you have?
I'm a sole proprietor.
Okay, is there any expectation that you would be hiring on additional help?
Eventually.
But not for the immediate?
Not immediately.
Correct. Um, I don't know that I saw it in the actual. Application. Do you know the square footage of the lease area that you're?
Like the entire space?
Uh, just your space.
I believe it's approximately three thousand square feet.
Uh, what are your expected hours of operation? And by that, I mean, from an outside standpoint, what do you think the, the longest window of time you would be looking at for business hours would be?
Probably eight to five.
Seven days a week?
Uh. So I have a separate job. This is um, growth for me as a second job.
Okay.
Full-time job, it seems like, but um. Eventually, it's going to run probably six or seven days a week, just because of I have a regular rotating schedule at my other job.
Okay, and the eight to five would be inclusive of closing the doors, cleaning up, shutting down?
Sure, absolutely.
So eight to five, seven days? Uh, are there any waste concerns, uh, disposed oil, any hazmat?
All the oils and fluids that are recovered from any of the equipment is all recycled and sent to uh, be uh, used in waste oil burners. So it's secured in oil drums as it would.
Gotcha, and that is picked up by a service?
Yes, the owner of the, the burner, a company, so.
Other questions, concerns?
I don't think we have to worry about if there's gonna be any added lighting or anything like that, it seems like it just goes to a. Yeah, bucks there.
Yeah, he's in the business district, correct?
So.
I think that.
Manufacturer, or manufacturing with the manufacturing district.
Yeah, I mean, it is, it is an allowed permissible use under thirty-two fifty-two.
And I, I spoke with the applicant, um, eventually, the whole. Uh, complex will come forward for signage. So right now. They haven't, Chafee Roofing hasn't got their signage, uh, so when that, when they come for signage, they'll come for signage for this business as well.
Gotcha. Do you, does the space that you're leasing have a? Uh, loading dock, uh, delivery ramp?
Yes, sir, it does.
So any deliveries that you would be receiving would be off street? They would come.
Absolutely, yeah, hundred percent.
And that's gonna be kind of where this uh.
There's a long driveway on the rear of the building, kind of across from Jack's Family Restaurants parking area. Uh, that would be my, my uh, driveway access. There is a loading ramp and a, a main door on the right side of the loading ramp door.
Is that where this concrete ramp is? That's gonna be your loading area?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Okay.
Excuse my drawing, it's a little uh, rudimentary.
Better than mine. Um, all the work is gonna be done inside.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. And from a parking standpoint, this would be a question for the building official. Would we qualify this as like an allied use to manufacturing or is this a business commercial and office use? I'm thinking parking numbers.
So off the top of my head, the, the answer to your question, I don't have it in front of me, but we did the parking and there's ample parking for what he's, what he's looking for. Um, it's, it's sole proprietor, um, he only needs, I believe it was like four spots and he's got way more.
Yeah, the drawings were showing four spots, so.
Most of the work I do, sir, I pick up and deliver back at the, the customer's property, so uh, the. Customer parking doesn't have to be extensive for, and it's super temporary. It's just for dropping off equipment or loading equipment. Pretty sh, very short term.
That makes sense. So I will probably say that that came under the allied use cuz the math would, would definitely work in that respect. We'll go with that. It's definitely not the one space for every two hundred and fifty square feet. Other questions or concerns? Great, if you would have a seat for a second, if there is anyone in the public that would like to speak on this matter, please come forward. Seeing none. We will close the public portion, come on back. Is there anything else that you'd like the board to know before we have a discussion? See what we're gonna go from here?
Uh, no. That's all I have, thank you.
Are there any further questions or is there someone prepared to make a motion? Go for it.
Uh, make a motion to approve application Z B dash twenty five dash twenty two. No name Realty LLC owner and Barry Corina applicant, two ninety three Market Street, uh, Child Street, Plat Map twelve, lot one sixteen. Request for special use permits to allow a small automotive repair and manufacturing zone. A special use permit is compatible with the new brick land uses. Uh, you go manufacturing to the east of them, you have national grid power lines. Uh, so I think it fits that, uh, the special use of not free hazard, uh, he has fluid, oil and maybe transmission fluids that would be picked up by a service. Was compatible with the comprehensive land, uh, it's in an industrial building as it is right now. So I don't see any issue there and all the convenience and welfare, he's going to be doing small injury there. So I don't, I don't know if anybody has anything else they want to add to this.
Bring any new businesses or what?
Yeah, it's good. Uh, we will note that, uh, for the record, the lease area is approximately three thousand square feet. And the hours of operation for this special use permit will be eight A M. To five P M., seven days a week.
And I'll second it.
Excellent. Uh, there's a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Alrighty. Fourth up on the agenda, application Z B twenty five dash twenty three, Maduro Properties LLC owner and Ryan Maduro applicant, eighty Cutler Street, Plat Map eight, lot one thirty two, request for dimensional variance to construct a forty by one hundred commercial building with less than the required frontage on a street and less than the required buffer from a residential zone in the business zoning district. Let's start by having the applicant come up, give his name and address, and then it's my understanding, we have store good time.
Good evening, I'm Ri- I'm Ryan Maduro, I live at nineteen Andrews Court, Bristol, Rhode Island.
Very good. Matt, take it away.
So unconventional way of doing this, uh, this is, this is quite a unique, uh, piece of property. So, um, this, this property was before you, um, a couple of years ago where they did open lot storage. Um, there was a home at a residential building on this property that was demolished several years ago, um, and it, the open lot storage didn't work, so Mr. Maduro, who is a business owner in town, um, he was working kind of out of his house, actually right near the last applicant address, and he wants to expand and, and grow his business. So he, uh, approached me, uh, to find out if he could put a, a building there. Um, and he was informed of all the setbacks and everything was perfect. He, he designed a building that was going to fit in the setbacks, there was no need to come before zoning. Um, he was getting ready to knit all his plans and to build the building. And on, on a neighboring property, uh, I had to meet with, uh, an owner of a neighboring property who said to me, um, yeah, that, that road isn't, isn't, that's my road and that's not a public road, so, um, Maduro can't build a, a building there. So I did some digging and we're still doing digging because we still don't know who actually owns the road. Um, but where it, it's. Yes, so from, from Crowe Street South. And I always thought it was a public, it was owned by the town, everybody. Yeah, so there's, there's two, there's, there's from, from Crowe Street to a little bit of an area, which is, we're still investigating as to who actually owns that. And then, then there's another area that goes with the property to the west of the Mr. Maduro's property. So there is a, I believe, nine foot wide area that is on the roadway, which that would be his access to this property. Um, if we, if we could figure out who owns the road, which we believe the town owns the road.
How long is it going to take for them to accept?
Um, I can't answer that question, but to, i- in the, uh, hopes of having Mr. Maduro be able to build his building, there is a way of a, uh, variance tonight, if you could, if, if it was approved, that would allow him to build the building without the proper frontage, but also have the nine foot access from the road. So he does have nine feet on what is known as the town road. But the other portion of the road, again, we're trying to figure out as to who owns that road.
So, we would, so if, if, so ten feet of it, because the road isn't, we don't know who owns that section of road or what, what was road.
No, ten feet is what we own, the town of Warren owns ten feet. The rest of the.
So he's short on frontage of what, ten feet?
No, ninety feet.
Yeah.
Go on. Let's talk about like the implications of, if we do something like this, what, what does that? How does it change the landscape of that?
Isn't that the, isn't that the lot that's all fenced off and?
That's his lot.
Yeah, and that's where you're going to build on there?
Mm-hmm, that's where he would like to build a commercial building where he would like to house his masonry business.
He getting into that lot?
The nine feet that's on.
Is that where your retractable fences is where you go with?
Uh, yeah, it's an existing fence on the property, it's, I mean, I access.
Is that where that nine feet is though, where that retract?
No, the nine feet is right on the corner of, uh, Crowe Street and Cutler Street. So basically from Cutler, from Crowe Street, you come nine feet south, that's, that's town property, and then the rest is the property that we're trying to, uh, to try to, uh, understand who owns it. Uh, you, you, you see Mr. Uh, Aruda, who owns the property to the south of Mr. Maduro, um. The town of Warren maintains the road. But, so we need to figure, this was something that was brought to us that we had no idea, and that's why.
Create a, so the town of Warren, if they did sell that land, can't, you can't create a non-standard lot though, right?
No, there's no, the town of Warren does not want to sell the, the land.
No, no, what I'm saying is if somehow the town of Warren sold it years ago, you've created a lot that's if Warren doesn't own this land anymore.
We are trying to say it's landlocked.
It's landlocked because you, it, but it was cre- but it was not, whoever owned the land had a piece of land that became landlocked at the point. That road did connect at one top.
Right before zoning was ever, it was.
I know, but it, if Warren doesn't own it, then we've created a non-standing.
So the matter at hand right now is there is an access to get down to Mr. Aruda's property and to the property to the west, which is a vacant parcel, is also access to get to Mr. Maduro's property. Legally, he doesn't have access on a public road. He has, he has his property on a private road. At this point, we just don't know who owns that property.
Because it's private.
Because it's private. And we're in the process of going through the, the, the steps to figure out who owns the road. Um, I've gone back many, many years in council meeting, uh, council minutes. Um, it, 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 the, at, at one point, the road was abandoned, so it's going to be the, the, the onus is going to be on the, on the, the, the people who believe that own it to come forward and prove that they own it.
So there was proof somewhere in this record that you searched through that it was abandoned?
At one point, yes.
Okay, so we know who owned it at, at that point. So what happens to a property when it becomes abandoned, uh, legally to the town, is just the, the town takes it over or?
Especially if you've been maintaining those.
Please, yeah.
There's a process, again, I don't know enough about um, the historical steps ta- taken and not taken out of that, um, can take that property, you know, become possession of town of Warren.
Is there any negative consequences to us entertaining this tonight, um, relative to this property in the future, like?
I don't believe so. Posing is that there is certainly a nine foot access road, and that's a fact. And because we're taking that approach, um, he's asking for a relief based on that. Because if that wasn't an issue, then he wouldn't even have to be here.
So we could give him that access, that nine foot access? And it wouldn't disturb?
Correct.
The other lot that we're.
So I believe it was six months ago, maybe a year ago, if you remember, there was a, there's a piece of property on Medicum Avenue that they're currently building a, a residential home and it's behind the Sippin Dip. And so this is a exact similar situation, there was an access, they didn't have, it didn't have frontage on it, on a road, but it had access to it. So that's, it, it's to think of how that went, how that parcel was, that's the similar here. Unfortunately, that, the, the road issue is, it's, it's, it's part of the case, but if you take that aspect out of it, what we're trying to do is exactly what we did there, and now we, the applicant's trying to do is to have it so that way he has access to the property, but he doesn't have frontage on the road. Now, once this legal issue goes through and if the town does prevail and say, no, it is the town's road, or somehow, some way, uh, the owner says, I'm going to relinquish it to the town, well then, we wouldn't be standing here with this case. Unfortunately, because of this, this, and, and if it wasn't brought to my attention, I mean, it, and, and I don't think, if anybody is, you'd, I'd be shocked if anybody here said, oh yeah, I knew that was a private road, because I had no idea it was a private road either.
I know it's come up in discussion in council meetings about being able to open it up for emergency reason. Construction or an accident or something to go all the way through Cutler or Cutler.
Yeah, so all I can, all I can comment on that is the, it, it, there is a, a very large benefit for the town to have that as a town road.
I guess my question, just in looking at the drawings that have been provided versus the plat map that I have available to me, can you tell me where that nine feet is? Because if the town road, if the official town road stops at Crowe, there's three par- four parcels between the parcel we're discussing and the intersection of other roads.
Did you pull a plat back yourself or is it in this?
Uh, no, I, I have it in my book.
Oh, alright.
So I, I don't know which, which one you're looking at, but it's, it's nine feet from the northwest property line down. So if you, from the, from the benchmark of the northwest property line, if you come down nine feet on what would be Cutler Street, that, that's, that's town road, and then the rest is, um.
The rest is in dispute.
Okay, yes.
So where that gate that opened up now to go to the property, that's locked in, isn't it?
No, so the gate, I, I, that's going to come, that gate's not going to be his access point, it was access, now, eventually it may be if, if, you know, it's, it's found that Mr. Aruda owns the road or someone else owns the road or the town owns the road and Mr. Maduro gets permission, but at this point, for this purpose, his access will be a ni- a nine-foot driveway going from, from the property line right in.
So he'll have to put these access there, which is on this corner here, right here? This is Cutler?
Yeah, so it's that northwest corner.
Like right here?
Yeah, that, that marker, south nine feet. Along Cutler, that's the, that's the frontage that we're talking about.
Okay. Are you talking right where the electrical meter box is?
No, uh, the top end.
Oh, the top end of, yeah.
Yeah, so just to be clear, the only thing we're considering tonight is, is he allowed to do this on a lot with less than a hundred feet? Nothing to do with where the access is or anything like that, correct?
So, or am I wrong?
I just want. Well, so, so you have to have access to the property.
Yeah.
So it can't be a landlocked property, right? So, so yes, tonight, it would, the variance is that, is to have the, the building on a piece of land that is not, does not, does not have the required frontage on the street. With that comes access to the property, so we, we're showing that there is access to the property. So when you make your decision, you know that there is access to the property, even though they don't have the frontage on the.
Good, yeah, just, yeah, I just want to make sure so that we didn't get into discussions on, well, how wide does the accessory need to be? No, the fact that there is access, that's all, okay. That makes sense. That being said, assuming there was building on the lot, tell us what you want to do with it.
Um, so it's basically, it is my building to run my business out of it. Um, I don't really envision renting it to anyone, it's quite frankly, I need, you know, I, that's where I'm going to be. I'm, you know, it's my bread and butter, I gotta, I have to have that building for, for my property, for my business, rather. Um, and I was proposing a metal building. Um, but I'm actually most likely going to build it myself. Um, it will be a masonry building. Um, probably an architectural block, just so it doesn't look like an old, you know, C M U building. Um, give it some sort of flavor to it, maybe a colored split face block. Um, and that's pretty, it's pretty simple, you know, a couple of overhead doors for my trucks. And that's it.
And the building is going to be about, uh, four thousand square, well, it is going to be four thousand square feet?
Yeah.
Okay. And you've got a number of spots here. It's like fifteen regular and one, uh, handicap?
Yeah, that'll be located on the side and the handicap will be in the front of the building. Which should give access to like the office.
You may have already answered this, but I got lost in the shuffle as we're talking about the road, um, how many employees do you plan on having, uh, work in here?
Uh, right now, we have sixteen.
Okay, and are, are any of them like, you know, office who's going to be at the, the building or? Yeah, most of your guys are going to be kind of, you know, out on the road on job site?
Yeah, it's, 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 most of us will be out on the road, there may, there will be one office manager, she'll be in the office.
And bear in mind, this is just a variant, it's not a special use.
Yes.
Parking doesn't, I was just following her, just ask him. Always good to know. Um, so in all, all of the, the business is going to be conducted within the confines of the, when I say all the business, um, will you rephrase that? Um, nothing that you're going to be doing inside the building is going to cause, you know, excess noise that's going to bleed out to the main.
Yeah.
Okay.
And quite frankly, after four thirty, five o'clock, there won't be anyone there anyway. You know?
And what are the proposed hours, if, if you have?
Uh, six to four o'clock. I mean, technically, our was a seven to three thirty, but guys get this, you know, six thirty, like any, you know, construction company.
What type of construction is it?
Masonry.
And I guess this is a question for the building official. Do we still need to consider this line on the application less than the required forty-foot boundary from a residential district? It still seems like the building need to be set back more than that. Even if we're talking about the edge of the road, am I correct about that?
Um, I, I didn't, I went off from the property line. And the residential boundary is right across the street, so I don't think it would hurt to approve it.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Let's do ourselves some public, if you would have a seat for a brief moment. There's anyone in the public that would like to speak on this matter, please come forward. Seeing none, we will close the public portion and if you would please. There anything else you'd like us to know before we have a few discussions and finish up? Excellent. There any other questions for the applicant? Anybody want to take a stab at a motion on this? You alright, Jack?
I'm good, I was gonna do that, but I got a tickle on my throat.
So I see how to.
Take a stab at it.
Alright.
I make a motion to approve. Yep, make a motion to approve applicant, uh, number Z B two five dash two three. Maduro Properties LLC owner and Ryan Maduro applicant. Eighty Cutler Street, Plat Map eight, lot one thirty two, request for a dimensional variance to construct a forty by one hundred foot commercial building with less than the required frontage on the street and less than required buffer from a residential zone in the business zoning district.
By voting against this, a hardship due to the unique characteristics, characteristics of the subject land or structure, uh, not to be general characteristics of the surrounding area and not due to a physical or economic disability of the applicant. The hardship is not a direct result of the prior action of the applicant. The granting of the variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area. The request conforms to the purpose and intent of Warren's zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan. Um, just to make note that the applicant has stated that the business hours would be, is that Monday through Friday?
Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday from six AM until four PM.
Uh, I think we will codify into the record that, uh, per the testimony of the building official, the official nine-foot frontage will be from the northwest corner of the property, south by nine feet, so that will be the official, uh, street frontage for this property. Um, and we will note for the record that, uh, the nature of what we believe to be Cutler Street, uh, for the remaining length of the Cutler Street frontage and the contested nature of the ownership of that property, uh, was a recent development, hence this particular application. Are there any other caveats or conditions on this application?
Mr. Chair, if I may, just to clerical clarify, it's not forty feet in the buffer, it's fifty feet in the buffer.
Is it real? That change? Yes, we probably need to address that, I guess.
Yeah.
Do we know how far off the building is? We are talking structure from a residence district combined? Am I correct about that?
Section thirty-two dash seventy-eight.
Yeah. Oh, and is this a, this is a manufacturing district, not a business district? No, it's commercial, I thought.
Commercial industrial.
Oh, there we are. Yep, I got you. Yes, so fifty feet. So yes, then we would want to codify that the second portion of this variance is to allow the distance from an adjacent residential area or residential boundary to be forty-six point one feet per the drawings that we were provided, rather than the fifty feet required by section thirty-two dash seventy-eight of the zoning. Are there any other comments or conditions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Good luck to you.
Thank you. Did we get a second in it?
I'll second it if, uh, nobody else did. Very good. Alrighty. One more for the evening. Uh, let's do application ZB twenty-five dash twenty-four, Paul Forton and Tara Cunningham, owner and Paul Forton applicant, sixty-three Maple Street, plat map seven, lot two, request for a dimensional variance to construct a front porch with less than the required side yard setback in the R-ten zoning district. First, if you would, name and address, please.
Tara Cunningham, sixty-three Maple Street.
And Paul Forton, sixty-three Maple Street, Warren.
Excellent, one second. Uh, were we ever able to find out if lots two and three were officially merged or if we need to do that for the purposes of zoning?
Um, I believe on the map, it shows that they are merged. I, I don't know if you, you'd have to do it.
Okay. I think for the sake of clarity, just in case, depending on which plat map you look at, the home in question spans lots, uh, seven dash two and seven dash three. Uh, do you own two lots of property or are they a single lot to the best of your knowledge?
I know it's single lot.
You only get one tax bill, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, well, I think that probably answers that question then. So somewhere along the line, they have become one lot for the sake of your tax bill. Um, so that being said, please tell us what you'd like to do.
Yeah, we want to add a porch to the front of the house, as you can see from the application. The southwest corner of the existing building is, I think it's a, uh, nine-foot setback. And we want to put in a porch where the closest this, the, the, the shortest setback is ten and a half feet in that same location. And again, that's the southwest corner of the proposed porch.
That makes sense.
So is it a porch facing the south?
Basically, yes, front of the house. And the bike path is on the side of the house.
Mr. Chair, it should be noted that the porch is actually not, it's, it's gonna be off the property line more than the house is actually off the property line.
It's all over the house, yeah.
In your, uh, construction plans, is there any expectation that you would be removing any of the trees that are the buffer between your property and the?
No trees, some of the shrubs in the front of the house, hopefully we're gonna be able to replant them. Just the shrubs in the front of the house.
Gotcha, but none of the, none of the tree line that borders the.
Yep, I wouldn't want it.
Questions from the other board members?
Looks nice, right?
So it's a quick question, uh, says structure is existing is non-compliant. Does that mean the porch that they, that's currently there now is taken without permit or?
Uh, am I correct that there is no porch there now, correct?
There is no porch there right now. The house, uh, was built in nineteen hundred.
Okay. And just from a clarification standpoint, when we codify this variance, if we codify this variance, we would want to codify the shortest distance from the structure? Or would we be codifying the distance to this porch addition? I ask because the corner of the house is actually only a nine-foot setback. So should we codify that the variance is that nine-foot setback, rather than the ten-foot six to the porch?
About this, no, it's basically touching the line.
That's a good point.
I think that would be, if you're gonna do that, that was what you'd wanna do.
Yeah.
The chair, so I, I, my understanding is that this is a legal non-compliant situation where the nine floor currently exists. I'm not exactly sure how it came into fruition, if it was pre-zoning or if it was through a variance.
Seems like it's pre-zoning.
Pre-zoning, that certainly is, can be a policy to, um, put the correct relief on the record, sort of nine feet. Um, would probably be easier to clarify if it was on the record.
Okay, and I guess the question then becomes, the plans show a small bump out further back towards the back of the house that looks like it goes essentially right up to the property. Is that, uh, a window extension or a bulkhead?
I mean, that we've added.
No, no, it would not.
You're talking about this little square here? That is an existing, uh, uh, yeah, second floor.
Oh, it's a second floor balcony.
Oh, yeah.
I see, okay.
Do you know how far off the property line that is?
I do not.
It's super close, which is.
It's super close, yeah.
I think for all intents and purposes, it's close enough that based on the scale of this drawing, we could call it nothing.
Yeah.
This is not a bad thing, whenever we come across properties that are, that predate zoning, there's always something there that, um, for the record, so that there is sort of a clean delineation of what is and is not allowed. We may choose to call the official setback for the entirety of the house, zero on that side of the house, so that it is clear from the record that it is okay, that little bump out or the, the second floor balcony goes to that, uh, extent.
Mr. Chair also specify, uh, although that piece comes out to zero, to nine feet and then the ten point six, so there's no further expansion of those two areas.
Gotcha, yeah, that way we, we're not kinda getting carpalaged.
Correct.
Mm-hmm, yep, that makes sense. Questions or discussion from the board? I think you guys can probably remain standing. We'll open the public portion and we'll close the public portion. Is there anything else you'd like us to know about the project?
No.
Is there any further discussion or is there a motion on this application?
I can, uh, do this one, I don't have a coughing spell. I move application of, of, uh, application, I move approval of application ZB twenty-five dash twenty-four, Paul Forton and Tara Cunningham, owner, Paul Forton applicant, sixty-three Maple Street, plat map seven, lot two, request for a dimensional variance to construct a front porch with less than the required side yard setback in the R-ten zoning district. Thank you. Um, in granting this, we find that other relief is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land or structure and not to the general characteristics of the surrounding area. It's not due to the physical or economic disability of the applicant. Yeah, there's been some testimony given that this house was built in about nineteen hundred and we do believe, it appears to predate the zoning ordinance. This was a previous, uh, non-conforming property. We find that the hardship, uh, sought is not the result of any prior action of the applicant. Um, this is being proposed as a new porch addition and we will later be memorializing the existing setbacks as they stand for the remainder of the house. We find that granting, that the granting of the requested variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan upon which the ordinance is based. Um, this is a, um, this is an old home in a mature neighborhood and adding a, uh, front porch like this is something that many other homes in the area already have, and this will certainly blend in, um, to the existing properties in the area. And in granting this dimensional variance, we find that the hardship suffered, uh, by the owner, whether it's not to be granted will be, uh, more than a mere inconvenience, uh, meaning that the relief sought is, uh, minimal to a reasonable enjoyment of the permitted use to which the property is proposed to be devoted. Um, what's been proposed, um, the indications from the applicants show that this is a reasonable-sized porch, um, so that they can enjoy their, uh, their house. In granting this approval, we will memorialize the, um, proposed setback for the porch as well as the existing setbacks for the house. The ordinance requires a fifteen-foot setback. What is proposed with the addition of the porch will be ten feet, six inches, resulting in a, in four feet, six inches of relief. The su- the southernmost corner of the house is nine feet off of the property line or fifteen feet exist, resulting in six feet of relief. And then there's a second floor deck which near comes to the property line and for the purposes of today, we are saying that is a zero foot setback where fifteen would be required and that's giving a relief of fifteen feet. In granting this, um, approval, we make these memorializations for the record and are not giving, uh, it just memorialized for the record an approval of this porch in specific, uh, specific.
Note that that's on the east side of the property, oh, west side of it.
It's north, south, east, west.
Thank you, yes. Very good.
A second?
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Great, thank you very much, thank you.
And Kaylee, thank you very much for the house.
The first week?
Is there anything else to come before the board? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh, just quickly, uh, it would, I know that we're past the administrative matters, um, but if we could get, um, we're missing the addendum of facts in that zoning requirement chart, which was super helpful.